I'll be calling the City Council meeting to order on Monday, November 10th at six o'clock. So for the record, all council members and the Vice Mayor are present. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Now do we have any public comment for closed session items?
Mayor Candell, we have no speakers in the Don Tatsin Community Hall and we have no hands raised in our virtual audience.
Great, so we will go into closed session and be back at seven o'clock. Thank you.
Suzanne, we're ready.
The other end becomes like...
...is becoming... ...quite a career.
Mayor, you're good.
You're the steward.
Yeah, I have another one that sits in our flying house, so it's under bubble wrap, literally.
Okay.
Because most possible hurricanes, right?
I was, I was, I don't know if I'm ready.
Good evening, everybody. We're back into the city council meeting tonight, and we were back from closed session with no reportable action. So now we will go to the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the monument of the unceded ancestral homeland of the Bay Miwok people. The Bay Miwok and neighboring Olone people have lived in and moved through this place
All right. And since this is the first meeting of the month, we have our land acknowledgement statement. So we acknowledge that Lafayette is part of the unceded ancestral homeland of the Bay Meowak people. The Bay Meowak and neighboring Olone people have lived in and moved through this place for thousands of years. They stored it and shaped this land for hundreds of generations. We express our appreciation and gratitude for this profound legacy, which enhances and contributes to our lives to this day. We will strive to honor this land and strengthen our ties with the indigenous communities that continue to live in our East Bay region as our neighbors and community members. We acknowledge and honor them and their ancestors, elders, and the next seven generations. Thank you. All right, now I'll go for public comment for items not on the agenda.
Mayor Candell and the city council will be taking comments first from persons in the Don Tatsin Community Hall for items not on the agenda. And then for persons in our Zoom audience, our first speaker is Brian Parsons, to be followed by Jean Fulmer.
Hello, and thank you so much. Appreciate everything y'all are doing. I'm Brian Parsons. I live at eight, seven, eight Santa Maria Way in the Trails neighborhood. I'm representing a group called Vibrant Lafayette today. It's a group of parents mostly in the downtown area who want safer streets, better biking and walking for for kids. What I want to talk about today is I just want to show my support for what I believe is the transportation, active transportation plan coming up. And all the parents are very excited about that and we want to do whatever we can to help support that. We also want to see that it takes into account parks, recreation, schools, all that stuff. So our kids can get around independently and selfishly as parents, we don't have to drive them everywhere. So thank you so much for your time.
Do you have any, wait, one second, we have a question.
Yeah, which which organization did you say you're representing?
Vibrant Lafayette.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jean Fulmer.
Hi, I'm Jean Fulmer. I live at fourteen seventy-seven Reliz Valley Road. Thank you for being here tonight and thanks for your service. I'm, I actually went to Trans circ and offered a similar message last week. So I just want to share that I'm seeing a need to train our school crossing guards to queue pedestrians at busy intersections like the one at Pleasant Hill and Spring Hill slash Quant Road. I raised this concern last in twenty seven, twenty eighteen, and I'm going to share it with the Lafayette School District as well. It's not surprising that traffic is congested during during peak morning rush hour. But looking ahead toward the terraces building that's supposed to start next year, I'm really hoping we can consider these suggestions and maybe get ahead of of what's coming. So, you know, a quick search turned up a few points and suggestions that have been implemented in other cities. So when pedestrians wait to cross as a group, they all cross during the same signal phase. This minimizes lingering pedestrians in the roadway after the signal changes, which can delay vehicles or block intersections. Vehicle throughput improves when there are fewer interruptions to vehicle green phases, resulting in a smoother flow and less stop and go traffic, and this also decreases driver frustration. Queuing or group crossing is particularly important for traffic flow on busy arterials like Pleasant Hill Road and near intersections with coordinated signal timing like Spring Hill Road. When a crossing guard is properly trained in queuing, they're able to activate the crossing signal at an optimal moment that balances both pedestrian safety and efficient vehicle flow. I was disappointed that the signaled crosswalk was reinstalled at the intersection of Pleasant Hill and Reliz Valley Roads when the walkway was redone a few summers ago, and I recall sharing my concern. I don't, I think with a couple of members of the Circulation Commission at that time. There is no crossing guard at that particular intersection. And what happens sometimes is you'll have a single Okalani student instead of going down the pathway and crossing with the crossing guard at Spring Hill. They'll push the button and then, you know, it just further backs it up, Pleasant Hill Road. And, you know, kind of once you get through that intersection of Spring Hill, Quant and Pleasant Hill, it really does open up quite a bit. So I'd love to see some attention given to, you know, maybe, you know, training them to watch, oh, look, it's it's turning over here. So now's the time to push the button instead of pushing it too often and backing it up unnecessarily. So anyhow, I really appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you.
No additional speakers at this time. Mayor Candell.
Great, thank you. Now I'll go to city manager's update.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. These are updates from the various city departments. I'm pleased to report that a task that has been on your work plan for a couple of years is now getting started. We've received five proposals to update the development impact fees. And we will be interviewing consultants over the next few weeks and starting that process. On November fifth, the city held its monthly community liaisons meeting. This is chaired by Mayor Candell and we have members of all city organizations, nonprofits, the school districts, just reporting on what they have done the previous month. What we found out is now that La Miranda Village is hosting senior swell three days a week at the library. And it's a very popular program there. Moving on to Parks, Trails and Recreation, the department is seeking community input as it advances plans for the Hamlin Parkland Site. A workshop was held on October the twenty ninth, and there is an online survey that we are encouraging people to complete by November seventeenth. Our Public Works team is very busy with storm preparation and cleaning ditches and inlets. And we have received a significant amount of work orders about potholes and down signs that we want to take care of before the rains begin. Engineering has started design for the twenty twenty six street maintenance project. And we have other minor projects going on throughout the city. Next month, you will see work being done on Mount Diablo Boulevard and Muraga Road in the downtown core area. We're going to be refreshing the striping in the, on those roads. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Great. Any questions? All right, no, any public comment? Nope, great, thank you. All right, we'll move on to presentations versus from Tracy Robinson. Is she here?
Yes, she, yeah. Anna, we're going to introduce our.
I was looking up there for some reason, I don't know why.
Let me just pull it up here. I'd like to introduce the council to our new hire, Anna Ponce. Anna Ponce recently joined the finance team as an accounting technician. She previously worked with the business team at Arinda Unified School District where she gained valuable experience supporting district operations and accounts receivable and payable. She says that she was drawn to Lafayette's welcoming, family-friendly community and fun local events such as the Art and Wine Festival. And outside of work, she enjoys traveling locally, hosting themed gatherings and navigating the adventures of learning Common Core math with her family. Yeah, so we are very excited to have Anna on the team.
Thanks, everyone. I'm very excited and grateful more than anything to be here. And yeah, definitely excited more than anything. So thank you very much for for the warm welcome. Thank you, I appreciate it.
And thank you, Anna. Thank you for selecting us to come to. We appreciate that very much. All right, Crime Prevention Commission Annual Update. I know, it's great. We'll take it.
All right, can you guys hear me okay? Well, thank you for having us. I'm Tracy Riley. I'm the chairperson for the Crime Prevention Commission and I'm seated next to my crew of great commissioners. We got Cam Burks and Judy Peterson and Denise Brown. So Larry Belusa was unable to make it tonight. Before I begin, though, if you would just give me a moment, tomorrow is Veterans Day. And so I'd like to just take a minute as a parent with somebody in the military. I think it's really important in having a chief who served in the military as well that we acknowledge those that have, you know, sacrificed and their families as well. So I just wanted to take a moment. So thank you for giving me that to just say, you know, we have our freedom because of sacrifices made by others. And I think it's important that we remember them. So with that, thank you for indulging me. So talk about what we've been doing. So it's been a little bit of a quieter year. And that's actually not a bad thing because with the crime, you don't want to have a lot of activity, right? So we have been doing our normal activities. And so one of the things that we try to do on a regular basis are all the events that we have in town. So and then we got back involved with the the National Night Out, which is the first Tuesday of August. And this year, the last couple of years, we've had it out here in the Quad area. And it's, it's got some pluses, but in August, it's really hot. And so this year, we decided to move it around a little bit and we moved it to the community center. And guess what happens at the community center on evenings? There's pickleball, if you hadn't heard that. There's pickleball that's happening. And there was so much activity out there and we had just a lot of people coming by. We had fire trucks, drones flying, and it was just a really great place to host it. Families who happened to be out for walks on the trail were were kind of pulled in. So it was great and it was shady, which was nice and lots of parking. So it was great. It was really well attended and we had a lot of people who just sort of stumbled upon it and and others who sought it sought it out. So next year, we plan on having it there again. We'll have a food truck this time, so people who might want to stick around a little bit longer. But I thought it was great and the feedback was good. So that was really a nice, a nice change. And I think, you know, the thought is we would like to move it into different city locations. But we're going to give this one one more shot and then, you know, maybe we can look at moving it to a different location the following year. Just so that we're, you know, kind of hitting everyone. But it was, but everyone plays pickleball, so there's people from all over town there. It was great. Art and Wine, so we were there. We shared a booth with the emergency preparedness. I think that makes really a lot of good sense. You know, there's a lot of things that we can share. Clearly, we're both under the purview of, you know, we work with the police department, so it keeps that simpler for staff as well. And then a lot of the, while they have a much different mission, and you guys will hear about that, you know, the common, the commonality is it's really organizing neighborhoods and people knowing each other. It's important for crime prevention and it's important for that. So I think having those together has been really synergistic and helpful. And so I like that. I like, I like that a lot. We haven't had any requests for neighborhood watches particularly, but again, you know, when there's a slower, when there's not a lot of crime, people just don't think about that. So I don't, I'm not taking that as a bad thing. We're here and people know we're here. Should they want to, new new neighborhoods want to organize, we're always available. And we make that clear that that's something that we can certainly do. But there really hasn't been a big need on that. Next, we'll switch gears to our crown jewel, which is our Citizens Academy. Judy is going to go into it more in depth, but I will say that, you know, we have, we did not have it in the spring or the fall with the new chief coming on board. I think, you know, it was just a lot to ask to try to get that up and running. And so now that we have, you know, we have him, he's fully, you know, fully in and we're, you know, in good shape. I think, you know, we definitely want to hit the ground running. It's a priority for us. I think it's a really important thing for the community. It's definitely what I, it's, as one of my commissioners mentioned to me, in fact, it was Denise, she's like, it's a crown jewel for the PD and the city. And I, you know, she said that and I, I thought you're right. And the other thing that Denise said, I'm going to give you credit, was that she said, you know, it, it sort of strengthens strengthened the connection within the city, right? And and they're good, the police are getting to know us, we're getting to know the police. There is a lot more connection and it builds a stronger fiber in this community. So I think that class by class, it's growing this, this nice, we're weaving this tapestry, I think, of connection. And so it's really important to us. I know it's important to you guys and to the police. So it's something that we will be hitting strong again come spring. And we would hope that some of you who haven't been, you know, been involved can maybe, I know you're busy with meetings, but it would be something fun. So with that, I'm going to turn the specifics over to the, because Judy and Denise have been running this for the last twelve years. Is it twelve?
At least.
Okay, so they, these two are, you know, they're, they're the brains and the brawn behind all that. So I'm going to give this to Judy and she'll talk about it.
I don't know what brains and bronze we have, but as we do a six evenings, oh, not, it's six evenings. And what we'll do is we, you'll get to know the police. The relationship, I think, that's really important is the relationship between the Lafayette Police Department and the Sheriff's Department and how much support there is between the two. So we'll meet, you'll meet the CSI folks will pretend to rob a bank, go to the jail, go to the morgue. That's always exciting. And the nine eleven dispatch. So what I'd like to see is everyone keep an eye out after the first of the year for our next spring academy. We'd like to have ten to twelve participants. If you haven't been, it's, it's a really good experience to get to know everyone. It's beyond meet the chief or meet, what do we do now? Meet the cops?
Coffee with the cops.
Coffee with the cops, yeah.
Has been starting.
Yeah.
You know, it's, this is just a really great opportunity to get to know how things operate for sure.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Do you want to add anything, Denise?
It's just, as Judy and Tracy have said, it's just a really wonderful way for the community to get involved. It's such a learning and educational experience. And as Judy mentioned, it's a six-week program, one night a week for about three hours. And a few of our meetings are here locally and that we do have field trips, if you will. We actually go to the shooting range on a Saturday and, as Judy said, nine one one dispatch, just to see how other organizations throughout all of law enforcement operate. It's, it's quite fascinating, actually, in the morgue and, which is kind of creepy, but it's really, it's really interesting. And we learn how they do their job. They peel back the curtain of the mystique, the just people don't know what's involved with being a law enforcement officer and what the training is, the ongoing training that we're so lucky to have here at Lafayette Police Department. And it is a wonderful opportunity for people to get involved. And Kathy does a great job of advertising that'll happen the beginning of the year to prepare for our class, hopefully in the month of April, April, May. So anyways, look for the information on that. And we are just honored to be part of this community in this way and working alongside the wonderful officers at the PD. So that's, that's all I have.
Thanks.
So we like this program, if you haven't noticed.
Yes.
Anyhow, no, so do you guys have any questions for us? Yeah, go ahead.
Well, it's more of a question or a statement. I guess I'm, I'm kind of proud to be the liaison, one liaisons for the commission last couple of years. I just love it. I gotta admit, the dedication of this group is stellar and it's phenomenal. And it's always makes me proud to know that the chief, I mean, it's really interesting how they are kind of the filter for the the police to really kind of get a good sense of what's going on and so helpful. So I think it's great. And I think National Night Out, I agree. I think we, we just make that thing, you know, neighborhood block party, right? Let's have everybody come out and see what you, what the police are doing and what and what they do. So I wholeheartedly support that. And of course, it'd be great to get the police, the Citizens Academy back going again. So again, thank you, thank you very much for your, your work. I just, I know how deeply you guys care and it shows in everything you guys do.
Thank you. Thanks.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I'm, I'll just echo what Councilmember McCormick said. I'm also one of your liaisons, but I'm getting to know all the commissions still. And I'm still a newbie and I'd love to attend one of your meetings. And if I can go to the Citizens Academy, maybe put me on a waitlist. Let other citizens first, but, but if there's space, maybe I can sneak in. Good for you. Yeah, so thank you for everything you do.
Of course.
Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Right. Thank you. I don't have any questions, but we do have to take public comment. Let me go see if there's any public comment.
Mayor Candell, I have no public comment on this item.
Great. So thank you, guys, everything, for everything you do.
Great. So thank you guys, everything, for everything you do. Go team. Good job. Keep it up. Yes. Thanks. And next, the emergency preparedness commission. Wow, look at that.
This report will include questions from 2025 and our most frequent. There are currently six members of the. Members are a mayor, a chair. Michelle Echol.
Welcome.
And these, we're all long-term members. Sherry Hoover. Kamelowitz. Stephanie Bonham, David Lambert.
Yes.
Sorry.
I can hear him. I'm sorry. We have.
And William Pigeon. Commissioner George Fugone resigned on November 5th after 13 years of service. He resigned to, to free up space so that we have room to have another volunteer join us. So our goals in 2025 were stated to monitor firewise neighborhoods and increase the number of neighborhoods in the program. We're going to hear a lot more about this when I finish and Stephanie takes over. We review the Lafayette Emergency Operations Plan. This is a, a prime responsibility of the commission. Every year we look at the emergency operations plan and we, we figure out what needs to be changed. What changes have happened in the city? What changes have happened environmentally in our overall condition? So that we would make changes that way. We also develop and execute a community education plan. With this, we work with the city's PIO Suzanne, somewhere back there, Suzanne, Iowa. And we publicize emergency preparedness topics. This year it's primarily been firewise, but we also heavily advertise the community warning service. Community warning system. Lafayette now has the county's highest level of participation in CWS at approximately 80%. And we're hoping to drive that north. With the changing of the position of the emergency service coordinator from John Cornell, who's moved on to the East Bay Regional Park District. As now Andy Comley. The emphasis of the EOC training, which is our fourth goal for the year. The emphasis has changed from the web-based Web EOC, which is an electronic emergency operations center program that handles reports and it sends the reports electronically to everyone who needs the information. It's a very good system, but it's a little overwhelming for new people. So Andy has changed the, the focus from the, the web-based program where half of the meeting, half of the time allotted was spent getting people logged into the system and teaching them the, the mechanism of the system. Now, this year he taught how to actually work in an EOC and what the basic functions are. The commission helped him by, by working in the, in the EOC, in the training exercises. One of the primary responsibilities of the commission is to develop plans for preparedness for the, the community. We developed a CPod. That's a commuter commodity points of distribution plan. We finished it and submitted it to you, the council for approval. A CPod is required by federal law. The FEMA requires that the cities have a CPod plan. And it's a plan so that we know when a disaster happens, how we're going to distribute commodities. The primary commodity that we're worried about is water. When, when we have a major earthquake and the EB mud pipes are broken, when there's no running water, the first thing that we have to do is get water to the residents. You could live weeks without food, but you can only live a few days without water. So the plan provides for a mechanism of getting water distributed to the population. The CPod structure can also be used for other supplies such as food, medicine and any other mass care items. Another plan that we're working on is handling of human waste. Whenever you eat or drink, it has to go somewhere. And when the water pipes aren't working, the toilets are not working either. So it's a plan that no one has come up with a plan yet in this area. We have to come up with a plan of how to handle this issue. It's involved because there are many agencies involved who don't want to deal with it, but have to. And so it's a matter of getting the, the people who are responsible at those agencies to, to talk and come up with a plan. We worked with, we participated in many events through the year. Many were meetings with neighborhood groups. Others included Earth Day on April 27th. Lafayette Art and Wine Festival in September and National Night Out in October. We also had many firewise meetings, which will be discussed by Stephanie. At the Lafayette Art and Wine Festival, as was mentioned by Tracy, we shared the booth with the crime commission. And we are always next door to the CERT booth, the Community Emergency Response Team booth. And we share staff with them also because our, our goals are very, very similar. We're dealing with the wildfire and with other emergencies that, that our commission works with also. Next, the commission tackled a project in cooperation with the Senior Citizen Commission, Senior Services Commission, pardon me, which was surveying fire hydrants within the city. Every fire hydrant has a blue reflective dot in the street so that fire engines can spot them and find the fire hydrant easily. The local fire crews don't have a problem. They have good maps. They know exactly where, where they are. But when, when a house is on fire, it requires more than a single engine. It requires engines from other stations within the district and mutual aid. We get mutual aid regularly from Moraga or Arinda Fire District. Their crews don't know where our fire hydrants are. When we have a big wildfire, God forbid, and we have to get assets in through mutual aid from other fire districts, they again will not know where the hydrants are. So the blue reflective dots are very important. So we worked on, with the Senior Services Commission, we worked on collecting the location of all the hydrants, checking for reflectors and getting public works to put the reflectors in place. About 50 locations were identified for installation of, of newer replacement reflectors. And about 20 locations on private roads were also marked with reflectors. During the year, representatives of outside agencies made presentations to the commission so that we could better understand their current and planned operations. These presentations included one by David Briggs, the Director of Operations and Maintenance at EB Mud. And Chris Bachman, the Assistant Chief and Fire Marshal at Confire, spoke with us and he's a, a regular contributor, either in person or by email. He's a regular contributor to us. Acting as the Citizen Corps Council of Lafayette, the commission received reports from La Marinda CERT. Two basic class series of nine weeks each were held in 2025 with 55 students attending those classes. Those students were primarily from La Marinda, but a few were from out of the area, El Cerrito, Kensington, Walnut Creek, so forth. But mostly they were La Marinda students. Monthly meetings were also held, including an onsite search and recovery exercise held in conjunction with the Moraga Police Department, where we located victims of, of a shooting. And then we found evidence that had been left scattered throughout a park. So it was, the goal was to increase their staffing ability by using us as, as volunteers to, to just be a force multiplier to find more evidence. We did a hands-on CPR class and other topics such as disaster sanitation, radio use, crush syndrome, go bags, disaster food and water and others. A Zoom monthly meeting is being held right this moment, presented by John Cornell, with the topic being drones for law, fire, commercial and military use. Next year, a few structural changes are going into effect, including membership and leadership. We've had only two chairmen since 2005. In 2005, Fred Lothrup became chair and then in 2015, I took over as chair. This is my last year as chair.
Okay.
I will be turning that over. And some of our commissioners have served for decades. Sherry, since 1997. Michelle, since 2002. Michael and I have both been there for about 13 or 14 years. And Stephanie is the new one. Little over a year now. So we're looking for some new volunteers and we'll rotate the leadership positions. When the current position, when my term is chair is up, we will start a, a rotation to, to get some, some new blood, some new ideas in there. The principal product of our work for the last several years has been the resident's guide to wildfire, wildfire preparation or preparedness and evacuation. It's due for an update. We've had two versions. The first version came out in 2009, 19, rather, 2019. It was a 16-page version. Put together by the commission and then distributed to all three jurisdictions in La Marinda. The second version was a 20-page booklet. We added a four-page cover onto it. Printed in 2022 with 35,000 copies. Those copies were based on the population of the three jurisdictions. We divided costs with Moraga and Arinda and mailed it to every postal address within the area. We're down to the last couple of hundred copies. Time to review, make some changes, make some additions. The plan is to add another four pages and to print another round. Probably mailing it out. The, there was discussion, we've had a discussion in the commission about making a digital version of it instead. It would certainly be a lot less expensive, but Lafayette is home to a lot of older folks who, who rather have printed copy rather than just all digital. So it was our feeling that we needed a, a printed product that we could mail. Because frankly, when you put a digital copy on the city website, it doesn't distribute well to, to all the residents. So we're looking at probably a total cost. The last printing was about $15,000 with our share at about $6,700. With the additional four pages and increased printing and mailing costs, we're expecting to, it to be more like $19,000 to $20,000 total for the three jurisdictions. And as the current addition is, we will have it as a digital version on the city website. And that is my report. And now I'll turn it over to Stephanie for the firewise report.
Thank you Duncan. Thank you for telling us the news for a year from now too. Wow. Okay.
Hi, everybody. If we go back to the beginning of this calendar year, it was a really sobering start. When you think about the Palisades and the Eaton fires that occurred for our friends in Southern California. Our residents are very aware that we face very similar kinds of risk here. And so we had a lot of momentum beginning at the very beginning of the year. People got very serious about firewise very quickly. So we now in Lafayette have 30 fully recognized firewise neighborhoods. It's the largest in all of Contra Costa County. So, and we're growing. Eight of those were newly approved this, in the last 12 months. And we have another four that the applications are either in or going in momentarily, and they should be fully approved by year end. So we're thrilled with that kind of growth. If you look at that in terms of total number of homes, the size of these neighborhoods range tremendously. Our smallest is eight homes. Our largest is 295 homes. And that is about to be dwarfed by Burton Valley, which when it is approved is about 950 homes. So yeah, it's a 20% growth when you look at it in terms of total number of homes in the past year. We, so our commission, we have spent a lot of time providing advice and support to those groups as they, they get their applications ready. One of the tools that we created this year is our map, which I know all of you have seen. Yes, in fact, I do carry it with me everywhere. So this map is already outdated. So some of the areas that we're coming soon on here are already approved. We have new ones in process. It is, the live version is on the city website. And so that is regularly updated and it is doing exactly what we wanted it to do. So this, this, we have these posters at Art and Wine Festival and both the city booth and the emergency preparedness booth. We got over 50 people who signed up. We had great conversations about firewise and 50 people signed up to get more information. So it gives us a huge amount of momentum to pull into 2026 for new areas. So it gives us a huge amount of momentum to pull into 2026 for new areas. The commission will use this map in two ways. One is that we want current residents or new residents to be able to go online and say, hey, am I in a Firewise neighborhood? Who's my leader? So the leader information is available if you just click on each of the areas. That worked splendidly this week when I was contacted by a new resident of Lafayette who said, hey, I don't think I'm in a Firewise neighborhood. How do we fix that? And he is now, I have another call with him tomorrow to get him on the path to do that. So he's over in the Los Palos area, Los Trampas, Diane Court, that whole area over there. So we're already off and running for next year. The other way that we will use it is to look at neighborhoods that we know are higher fire risk across Lafayette, around the reservoir, northern part of Relise Valley, and target those to try to identify people we know in those neighborhoods who could help Firewise get started there. So excited about that. We also created a Google group for Firewise leaders across Lafayette. So we have about forty people who are part of these various Firewise groups and that gives us the ability to share information amongst each other, ideas. So we have regular communication on things like what's going on with insurance, what are strategies that different groups are using for evacuation in their neighborhoods? And there is a huge amount of variety. It's great to see the dialogue going on. We had our first in-person gathering in September and it was just wonderful to hear all these people from all over town sharing their ideas. So we will do more and more of that going forward. As Duncan said, we did a lot of community events where we were communicating about Firewise. Happy Valley Improvement Association had a dedicated wildfire preparedness annual meeting this year, super well-attended. The Senior Services Commission, I did a presentation to them with Andy Calmley, I believe, about Firewise and what it is so that we could think about how to get the word out to seniors in our community. And of course, Art and Wine Festival was a big one for us too. When we look at 2026, as I mentioned, one of our big plans is to continue to target new neighborhoods for Firewise development. We, as the state's Zone Zero requirements are released in the next couple of months, we'll want to go to our website and update that for any requirements that cascade into Lafayette. So we're prepared to do that. Two recommendations that we have, one is that we launch a dedicated Firewise booth at the Art and Wine Festival. We would staff it with Firewise leaders and in addition to being able to show the map, really be able to show visually, you know, what does wildfire preparedness look like? You know, some before and after photos, you know, detailed photos on when the fire department says limb up your trees, what does that look like? You know, if there's anything we learned from Art and Wine this year, it's a picture is definitely worth a thousand words. And so that is a proposal for this year. We also have been working with Contra Costa Fire and we have their commitment to work with Lafayette to do a pilot volunteer ambassador program for our community. So many of you may be familiar with the volunteer ambassador program in Maraga Arinda. It's conducted through their fire district and they have thirty or forty trained volunteers that the fire district helps them understand through initial and ongoing training what the fire requirements are. So they're really leveraging community resources to be able to go out and do assessments of folks' homes. And this is not in any way stick, this is only carrot. This is residents would request, hey, could you come out and look at my property and give me some recommendations? You know, you have a checklist, you're trained by Contra Costa Fire to go do this. And so the idea is that we would, we have two built-in populations that are perfect for this, all the Firewise leads across town, and we also have a huge array of master gardeners in town who are really interested in helping on this as well. So Contra Costa Fire wanted to wait until the Zone Zero rules land and they are working across the county between, say, San Ramon Fire, Confire, Maraga Arinda Fire, to level set all of their fire requirements, compare and contrast and try to let everyone get on the same page as much as possible. Once that all settles, which they felt would be by the end of this year, we'll be prepared to kick that off next year. Yeah, so that's, we've had a great year and we look forward to another great year and really, we're very grateful to the community support that we get. Contra Costa Fire has been amazing. Our police district and Andy Calmley, who's our emergency preparedness officer, is a great partner in pushing all this forward.
Wonderful presentation, you guys. Great work this year. That was a really nice summary of everything you've been working on. Does anybody have any questions?
More of a comment.
Go comment.
Yeah, first of all, so I'm really probably in the privileged seat here because I'm the council, prime lead council liaison to this commission. Councilmember Cormac has sort of my alter who comes often. So we try to double team this as best we can. And I just want to say, I think that the work that this commission does is really critical for our city. Wildfire Preparedness is the number one item on the council's priority list this year. It was number two last year. I suspect it will be somewhere on the top of the list next cycle. Don't want to speak for the council, but it just goes to show that the work you're doing, trying to ensure the health, well-being, safety of our community is just essential for what we are trying to accomplish as a city government here. So I really want to thank you all for the work you're doing. I love actually coming to these commission meetings because I always learn something. And I do want to say that, you know, in this year coming up, Duncan has kind of already announced that this is his last year as Chair. I'm looking forward to working with you to really see what we could do to sort of kind of kick up this commission to the next level, given everything you've done so far as a group. So that's the first thing. The second thing is I really want to give a shout out to the staff that support this operation. Kathy Surgis-Miscado in the back here keeps the engine running. And just like that, these commissions only function because staff keeps them going and really I just want to sort of like thank you for everything you've done. And we have every session, our police chief, Chief Williams in the back is there giving us a dose of reality and Andy Calmley as well, our emergency preparedness officer. So I think this is a really well-staffed, well-organized group. You've done tremendous work. And again, I'm looking forward to working as the liaison to sort of like see how we take it to the next level because really it's critical for our city and everything you've done is really just essential. So thank you all.
And ask Stephanie to explain one thing to you and to the audience about Firewise and home insurance and why the Firewise community membership is so important for insurance.
Sure. So Firewise is a mandatory discount on your admitted carrier insurance in the state of California. So, you know, there are a lot of things that have changed in the insurance universe in California, many more than need to change. But one of the things that was enacted is it's required by law for admitted carriers to give a discount for Firewise neighborhoods. And what is not dictated is how much, but you know, so if you're with State Farm, if they haven't canceled you, it's a small discount, fifty dollars or something a year. But if you're with the California Fair Plan, as more and more of our residents are, it's a ten percent policy discount. It's very significant on a high-cost insurance policy. So that is sometimes the carrot that gets people really interested and serious about Firewise, but I think once they get into the program and see the benefit of community engagement and working together to reduce wildfire risk, it's, people really see the broader benefit of it to our community.
Right, thank you.
As a council member, as I mentioned, I'm the newbie on the, from the council perspective. It's been very impressive seeing a couple of meetings, seeing what's going on. I want to echo, I guess, a couple of things. One is that we know Confire, they're a great partner, but they are spread quite thin. We have to, I think, continuously be just kind of the squeaky wheel, just demanding our disproportionate share of their time and effort and you guys are well-positioned to do that. So I thank you very much. We have to keep ourselves top of mind with them and it's only going to work with your dedication. I also want to shout out, I think, helping the new Zone Zero, I think is going to be really terrific. And so I think for you guys taking the lead on figuring out what it means for our residents and communicating it clearly because it's confusing and people don't seem to care unless there's an emergency in the last seventy-two hours, I think it's going to be terrific. So anyway, thank you very much for your work. It's been, it's been a pleasure seeing you guys in action.
One comment, I went down to the league meeting and there was a couple of wildfire sessions, but the one that, like the one takeaway that I had from a lot of those was that Grass Valley handed out magnets to all the homes that had their zone on it, their evacuation zone. So they put them on their fridge and we all went, oh, that's such a great idea. And so I don't know if that might fall under your, you know, your commission's.
That, the magnets are available, they're easily available. The only, only reason for knowing your zone, the only benefit of knowing your zone is when you are evacuated. If you know your zone, you can then check on the Genesis website to see when you can come back.
Right.
But you don't need to know your zone until you're evacuated.
So it doesn't, a lot of times you see them, we're evacuating this zone, this zone, this zone?
They, they will evacuate whether they, whether you know your zone and they will evacuate parts of zones. So knowing your zone is not nearly as critical as, as some people make it out to be. But it is.
I'd love to see the magnets though, if you think that there is something that we might be able to get access to.
Absolutely.
I know, this is, this is I'm asking, right? This is what I'm asking, right?
We can easily get you magnets, but, but it, the reality is.
Little fridge.
They are not that important. The reality is that when you're evacuated, you will not be by that magnet. So you, unless you remember your zone, it doesn't matter.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you. Do we have any public comment?
Mayor Candell, we have no public comments on this item.
Great, so thank you guys. Thank you so much. What was that?
One comment from Michael.
Sure.
I mean, I just want to thank the commission and the staff and the brilliant, outstanding police department that we have. And I think part of what you may not know is that Lafayette has become sort of a beta test site in many ways, and this was true when John Cornell was here. So although we're doing the things that need to get done, the reality is we are now attracting resources and other people who are interested to know how we're doing it. So I think that's an incredible place to be and I hope that we can continue to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, one second.
Build on that. Councilmember Savante's talked about ramping up and moving to a new level and I have to say, observing what you've been doing, you've been moving to new levels year by year. I mean, the Firewise effort that's been going on, the publication, it's just been tremendous. And particularly those of you who have been so long on the commission, thank you very much for your service. And Duncan, if this is the last time you're going to come before us as the Chair, thank you very much for your ten years as Chair.
All right, thank you. All right, we're on to consent calendar. Does anybody want to pull anything on consent? Do any members of the public want to pull anything on consent?
I have no request to pull an item from the consent calendar, Mayor Candell.
All right, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're on to old business, Patrick and Matt. Connecting Lafayette, this is just so exciting. Oh, a hundred percent, especially when it's got a sixty percent design phase done. That's exciting.
Can you plug something in to get it to go on the big TV?
There it is.
Ask and you shall receive. Okay, so what am I doing? It's, it's there.
Ah, perfect.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor, council members. We are at the last public meeting for this project. It has been a long road, so to speak. So what I'm going to do in this meeting is just kind of quick go over the whole project. At the time that we prepared this slide deck, we were at sixty-five percent plans. I suspect now we're probably closer to eighty percent plans because the consultant has continued to work along with this as we've been discussing it. Topics that we're going to talk about are the roadway geometry that we came up with, how we're dealing with drainage and stormwater, utilities and the conflicts that we've had, traffic elements, right-of-way, environmental landscaping, and our cost estimates and when we're going to build this and how much it's going to cost. So for those of you keeping track, we started this in 2023. It was a bit of a rocky start, but by the summer of 2024, we brought our proposed project to you for direction. You approved it and told us to go forth and design it, which is what we've been doing. We had our last public meeting in an open house format about a month or so ago. And last week, we had a Transportation and Circulation Commission meeting where they had a chance to look at these sixty-five, seventy-five percent plans and now we're here. The plan is to finish the project plans and specifications by the end of January and advertise for bids the beginning of February and open the bids in March and hopefully have all of the utility relocations done by April. So that's more than just utility poles. We have some gas mains that PG&E would like us to not build on top of. And we also have some water services and gas services that the utilities have asked us to let them move it before we build our project. And we plan on starting construction in April and will be completing construction in August. And yes, that does mean we're going to be starting this project before school gets out. Part of the logic behind that is this is just too big of a project to build just while school's out. We need to eat into the school year somewhere. My preference is to eat into it at the beginning of the project when the work that we're doing tends to be less disruptive. So it'll be things like installing signs, letting people know where the, what we're doing, potholing for utilities. And my personal preference would be for the contractor to start work on Topper because Topper doesn't have a facility right now. So if you're working on it, you're not going to displace any users because there aren't any users now. And then once school's out, then it's easier to work on School Street. The, we envision the project being done fairly close to when school goes back in session. If it goes long, that's not so bad because at the end of the project, we're doing things like vegetation planting, cleanup, punch list, things that are, it's relatively easy to start and stop so that the contractor's day isn't too adversely impacted. While school is in session, the working hours will be nine o'clock in the morning till two-thirty in the afternoon. That does impact the elementary schools' late drop-off and early pickup on Wednesdays. We are working with them to make sure that all the parents know what we're doing. Like most of our projects, well, all of our projects, we will be having a Friday update that we will post on the city's website and we're going to give a try at doing an email signup and blast, kind of like what the city manager does for the weekly roundup and the city manager's message, see how that works. The idea is. See how that works. Um, the idea is we want to make sure everybody that wants to know what's happening does know what's happening. And for those of you that don't know, the Friday update, we simply tell everybody, this is what we did this week. This is what we think we're going to do next week. Please be patient. Um, is it in a nutshell? Um, it's usually worked really well. I've found that Lafayette residents are incredibly forgiving. If you warn them in advance about the bad things you're about to do to them. If you surprise them with bad things, they are really, really unforgiving. And I don't necessarily blame them for that. Okay, so the project overview, uh, we're building a ten foot wide pathway on School Street. It starts at Maraga Road and goes all the way to the Lafayette Maraga Trail. And we're building a four to six foot wide pathway on Topper Lane. Technically, it starts on uh Bird Haven, kind of sweeps around the corner, goes down Topper and ties into the Lafayette Maraga Trail near Topper Court. There is a future project. Um, we've been given money to design it, but we don't have any money to build it. And that will extend a sidewalk down Saint Mary's Road to A Campo Drive where the existing sidewalk uh currently starts or ends, depending on your perspective. Uh, as part of that, we will also be formalizing the parking in that area. So it'll look a little bit like the parking from Solana to A Campo on the school side. So it's parallel parking. Right now, the problem in that area is people have a tendency to park however the spirit moves them. So it's a mixture of parallel parking, angle parking. And we found that angle parking in that area is just really dangerous because people can't see what they're doing when they're backing up. And they tend to back out into Saint Mary's Road relatively blind. So we want to make sure that they don't do that in the future. But that's a future project. So I'll skip over that a little bit. Uh, so as I said, we've had a lot of meetings. Um, one of the things we've done is with the Topper Lane residents, we met with a subcommittee of Topper residents to discuss landscaping. So I believe we had four, four meetings with them uh where they helped us and our landscape uh consultant develop the planting palette. So what trees should we use? What shrub should we use? Um, and we've, we've worked with the resident impacted residents to try and make the planting palette as nice as we can. Um, okay, so the plans. So this gives you kind of a snippet of School Street. School Street, as I said, will have a ten foot pathway. The little green lines on there are uh bioretention basins. So the width of that uh landscape median, if you will, face a curb to face a curb is three feet. The actual planting width is about two feet. Uh, this will serve as a couple of benefits for us. Uh, some of you may uh know that as part of this current uh discharge permit that we have with the water board, we are required to treat one point one acres of previously untreated impermeable surfacing. That's a mandate that they gave to us, an unfunded one, but it's still a mandate. Um, this will allow us to leverage this project to get some of that treatment area taken care of. So that's a very nice thing. And it serves as a nice separation between the sidewalk and the cars. At the individual driveways, we're leaving uh roughly seventeen feet of paved median area. Let me see if I can point at it. So right about there. And that's so that the residents have somewhere to put their trash and recycling bins. So they're not blocking the pathway and they're not blocking the road. Um, so that, that was a good thing that came out of of one of our public meetings. Someone suggested that. Uh, we will be maintaining the school drop off and pickup area slash parking area from First Street to Maraga Road, so that will stay in place. There won't be a bioretention basin in that area because there isn't enough room. The school district has um kindly given us an easement uh for, to take some of their right away near the intersection of Maraga so that we could maintain the full ten foot width of the pathway. We'll be relocating their wrought iron fence and um they've been absolutely wonderful partners in this project. Um, we won't really be changing any of the lane configurations. The lanes will still be ten and a half feet wide. Um, and the speed bumps that are currently out there will be completely removed and put back. We will also be doing some conform paving on School Street. So essentially, most of School Street, well, not most, but a good portion of School Street, the uh westbound lane will be repaved.
Oh.
Um, because the grades out there are such that we're going to have to modify them a bit to make everything work so that the drainage works for the individual driveways. Um, there are some drainage uh changes that are going to be made on School Street, primarily to deal with the water coming from the fronting property owners. We don't want to trap water on their property. And we certainly don't want to direct water from the street into their property. So let me look at my notes here, make sure I got all of those. Yep. Okay, so this is kind of a cross section of what it will look like uh at the Maraga Road end. You'll see no bioretention basin, ten foot pathway, except for where the utility poles still have to be. Um, that's a ongoing theme down the road. We still have to keep all the utility poles. Uh, the rural, rural twenty one program that PG&E had to underground stuff went away. And um Mike Moran talked to them very early in this process and the cost to do the undergrounding was extremely high and prohibitive. So we're not able to underground the utilities, unfortunately. This is a cross section of what School Street will look like from First Street to Topper. So you can see the bioretention basin, uh pathway and the pavement. I should mention that the pathway will be made out of asphalt. Where the driveways cross the pathway, those driveways will be concrete. So there's a visual change, plus their driveways will hold up a little bit better. One of the things that came out of a public meeting was a request that we please make the ramps the full ten foot width, the handicap ramps at intersections, the full ten foot width. So we will be doing that. That will require the installation of bollards in um the pathway, much as we have on Pleasant Hill Road. Uh, if we don't do that, people are going to confuse it for a driveway or a lane. Um, probably the biggest offenders of that are utility agencies because they don't want to deal with a lane closure when they're working on the overhead lines. They would rather just park on our pathway. So the bollards go a long way in keeping them from doing that. Uh, okay, so I went through that. So Topper Lane, so we uh have kind of made a, an amalgamation of widths to the sidewalk on Topper. The original plan was for a ten foot wide pathway. That was fairly uniformly rejected by the residents. So we went back to the grant agency, MTC, and asked them if we could uh reduce the width. They said yes, but they wouldn't give us anything firm in writing. They said, we want you to comply with the grant to the best of your abilities. We understand that sometimes trees or other things prevent you from doing exactly what you want. But we want you to try and stick to the spirit of of what the grant is for. So we did reduce the pathway to four feet or five feet to preserve um some of the more signature trees out there. Where there weren't any signature trees, we kept it to six feet. Or if it, keeping it to four feet wasn't going to save any of the trees in that area, we left it at six. Um, I also want to say, oh, we did uh shift the alignment of the pathway or actually the whole road and the pathway to preserve a large oak tree that the neighborhood uh said was very important to them. So we held the new edge of pavement pretty close to where the existing edge of pavement is. We actually were a little bit more conservative. That caused uh, I believe it's about a two and a half foot shift in the road alignment towards uh Bird Haven. That's actually what's shown on this plan right about there. Uh, so that was a, a major change. We will be overlaying all of Topper Lane uh as part of this. We will be replacing the speed bumps back where they are. The drainage on Topper right now consists of a ditch that is in various states of maintenance. Uh, many of the Bird Haven properties drain to that ditch. So that ditch will be filled in with the pathway as part of this project, and we will be installing a storm drain line uh underneath the curb and gutter to capture all that private drainage, plus capture the street, street water that's on Topper. We won't be doing anything on the opposite side of the road. There are many reasons not to. It would actually more than likely make things worse for some of the people on Topper if we tried to capture it. So we are not going to do that. Uh, we won't be putting in a center lane stripe on Topper. Doesn't have one now. And the residents have expressed a desire not to see one. We will be putting a fog line, which is the white stripe on the edge of the road. We'll be putting that in on the west side of the road because we do have a shift in the alignment. If I don't put something out there, people are going to go absolutely straight at night, and that would not be something we'd want to see. The other side of the road, you have concrete curb and gutter, so you already have a nice delineation for the edge of the road. Um, so this is the Topper cross section. It's fairly schematic, but gives you an idea of what we're doing. Um, I'm not sure those travel lane widths are right. I think the travel lane is actually ten feet in width. And uh then you have the pathway. Matter of fact, I know the travel lanes are ten feet in width. Uh, we won't be taking anything away from the uh home frontages. There was a concern that there's some parking areas that people have in that area. If you have a legal parking space in front of your home on Topper Lane now, you'll have a legal parking space in front of your home when we're done. Uh, okay, so this is the cross section that shows you what we're doing when you go from Topper around the corner to Bird Haven. Roughly a six foot wide sidewalk in that location as well, new concrete curb and gutter. And it'll tie in as you wrap around the corner on Bird Haven. Um, one other thing that came up in the public meeting is people asked if they could get another not a through street sign on Bird Haven. So we will be installing that. It's oddly on the wrong side of the road right now. Um, still visible if you're looking for it, but if you're not looking for it, you don't see it. So I'm going to put another one of those in um to try and cut down on people thinking they can drive through. And for landscaping, I'm going to have Kathy come up here, who knows a lot more about landscaping than I do. She is our consultant for landscaping.
Chuck in on you.
Yeah.
Well, thank you so much, um, council members, mayor. Um, we've had a terrific time working with the staff and of course, the neighborhood. Um, and that isn't over yet. We'll continue to work and listen. Um, but um, it's um a very contained landscape. It's very appropriately suburban and dealing, it's a working landscape. Um, particularly on School Street uh where it's predominantly bioswales. But we do plant it. They do double duty, uh not only aesthetic and and uh, well, maybe triple duty, cleaning the air, um, which is one of the few things that uh does do it are living plants. Um, and then of course, the aesthetic. Um, the plants along School Street are um very well behaved plants that will not require a great deal of of maintenance. They're very hardy, but they will withstand the inundation during heavy rains and uh survive the warm, warm summers. Um, uh, there's a annual display varied of color. Uh, that which we can match up with the type of plants that need to be in this environment to do their job. Um, so um, and this is a typical um section. You can see the, the narrow um bioswales. Um, but they will be planted, which um does give. Yeah, yeah, we should have flip flopped those. Um, uh, well, okay, so now you can see the um, the color display and um the character of them is such that they, you know, they may need um, once every couple of years, a little spruce up. But um typically, they do not require uh maintenance in, in terms of um pruning and and whatnot. Yeah. And then Topper um, it takes on a different character. Um, the predominant feature on Topper is um preserving trees and adding appropriate trees intermingled, um, working with an appropriate palette. Um, again, in these more narrow areas, um, we need to limit it. Um, but these particular trees will provide um shade um as they grow into themselves and um perform. Um, the understory is uh again, a, a palette of um pretty hardy, but um color based and um in all of our landscapes, we work towards, you know, a, a low maintenance. Um, all landscapes should have some maintenance. You don't want to um, you know, let it, let it go awry. Um, but um, you also want to have it appropriate to the conditions and roadside and along Topper, it is behind the pathway, so it gives us a little more leeway um and space. But uh those, those plants, uh we worked very hard with the neighbors, um, you know, back and forth, coming up with um trees that uh both from our perspective, did their job and would survive. Um, and more than survive, that they would be vigorous. Um, and then the um understory um being attractive and diverse. Uh, so it's pretty straightforward. Um, and it has um uh, there's some color composition to it and a, and a few things like that that the neighborhood really helped out with.
Feel free to state. I'm sure they're going to ask questions. Okay, and then the last bit is the fun part of funding. So we, we, Patrick managed to cobble together four point six million dollars for this project. Hey, Patrick. Um, and our estimated costs for this project are uh four, four million, three hundred and sixty four thousand dollars, including a ten percent contingency. So we have even a little bit more contingency to take care of any other incidentals. So we have a very healthy budget for this project. So I don't envision us having any, any issues in that regard. So with that, that is my presentation. If you have any questions?
Great. Thank you. Thank you. Great presentation and congratulations getting to this point. No, really, it, it makes a difference, right? It, we're at this point and you've got neighbors that are willing to go along with us and on this amazing project and moving together forward together. And that came from you. So really, and Patrick, thank you, guys. Any questions?
Yeah, terrific. Thank you very much. Yeah, I have a couple of comments afterwards, but just questions actually on this, this slide, in fact. Um, you, the, it says contingency ten percent, but it doesn't look like that is actually ten percent of the cost.
Uh, that's a construction, yeah, it's a
That's a construction, that's a little shy. That would be the construction contingency. It should be $370,000.
Right. Yeah, you're correct. Okay, great. So as long as we have it, because you know.
Yeah, we have.
And then I'm just kind of curious, if we somehow don't take all the money, what happens to the residual?
That's a good question.
It isn't very often, I don't know, so.
Yeah. Measure J, Obag and the federal earmark. I don't believe, Patrick might be able to answer this. Patrick, do we have any mandatory match? Okay, so I think if we're going to get to keep any of it, we would get to keep LFFA development fees. If we don't spend Measure J, Obag or the federal earmark, they're going to want their money back.
All right, I just know if we can keep for maintenance or overall improvements or.
Yeah, so we could try and keep as much of the LFFA money as possible.
Great, right. That's a question. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Mayor Candell. Just to follow on that, so the, the cost on the construction side, you'll nail that down sometime in the first quarter of '26 or so?
Yeah, it, it will be nailed down the day we get the bids. So, and then we'll come back to all of you with a staff report, letting you know how that turned out.
Okay, great.
Yeah, thank you. This is great to see the plans as they've taken shape. I have a question for School Street. Do you have any plans to alter any of the roadway items like the speed bumps or will they just stay in place?
The speed bumps will get completely removed as part of this because we're going to have to reconfigure one side of the road. And having half a speed bump in the street is kind of dangerous. So we'll completely remove them as part of the project, but they'll go back right where they are now when we're done.
Okay, thank you. And then I saw in the staff report that design, civil design is advancing for the St. Mary's Road segment from Acompo to Topper. But then it also says staff's focused on completing civil design on the project components that would be constructed. So I'm just wondering, who is doing the design on St. Mary's from Acompo to Topper? That staff or is that the other consultants?
It, it will likely be the other consultants because I don't have enough staff. If my staff gets back up to speed, we'll hand it, hand it over to them. As many of you know, I got a, a new senior engineer who is absolutely outstanding. So my hope is that some of this stuff we can start bringing back in-house to save some money. But right now it's budgeted for that to be designed by our current consultant. So we, we still have the funding to keep going with that design. But to be honest, we haven't done anything with it in eight months because this has taken priority.
Sure, okay. But, but you might be able to use some of those funds for that design?
No.
No, okay.
That, that funding was set aside by the city council as a standalone bit of funding.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Any other? All right, we'll go to public comment.
Very good.
Hey, Mayor Candell, we have speakers in the Don Tatson Community Hall and we'll start with Brian Parsons and Hunter Parsons. Are we both going to speak or just one going to speak?
That's just fine. And that is just fine.
That's all right. Yes.
So I'm Brian Parsons again, 878 San Maria Way. Thank you to the city council. Appreciate everything you're doing, especially with this project. So I'm a father of three at LES. Hunter is the oldest in second grade, River in kindergarten and Rosie in third grade. I'm here speaking on behalf for myself, but also for Vibrant Lafayette, where a group of at least a dozen parents in LES and Burton Valley. But for me, the big thing is I support this 100% Vibrant Lafayette supports this 100% as designed. For me, the biggest thing is my daughter Rosie, she will be using this for the next nine years. All the way through eighth grade at Stanley Middle School. So this is a big deal for us. It really makes an impact to her. She rides her bike every day. So getting that safety across is, is huge. I also walked down Topper Lane with Hunter this week and it was really scary. We did it during the crunch time of rush hour for schools. I was surprised at how dangerous it was. Everything you've probably heard is there, cars coming both ways. There was at least four cars in both directions at one point. Parents on their cell phones, they've got kids in the back. So I, I had no opinion on Topper Lane until I did that and now I am all in on it. So yeah, I support this. The group of Vibrant Lafayette supports this and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any questions? No, thank you. And thank you, Hunter, for staying up so late. Oh, you, oh, okay.
Hi, I'm Hunter. I'm seven years old in second grade. I like to bike or scooter to school on the trail. And I've been noticing the white posts. They're pretty weak and cars can like knock over them easily and then someone might can get hurt. And I like the idea of power making this barrier and putting plants in. And I think it's a good idea for maybe almost everyone. Yeah.
Thank you so much, Hunter. I, and I'm glad you think you'll feel safer on the new path as it's configured. And that makes us very happy here. So thank you for coming and speaking. Thank you.
Sorry for the next person that follows Hunter.
Yeah.
Gary Risk.
Thank you, council. Gary Risky, 843 Topper Lane. I know I've spoken here before. I want to say it has been a long project. I'm delighted that we're not at a 10-foot highway going down Topper Lane and losing all the trees. Obviously I would still have preferred a four-foot pathway. We didn't quite get there. I do want to thank Matt and Patrick for, and the, I'm sorry, I can't get your name. But for working with us in trying to adjust and sort of compromise in how we've gotten here. It's not the outcome that I think the Topper Lane residents would have wanted at the start of this, but we're at the point now where we're probably at the best of a bad situation and we'll live with it and we're sorry we're going to lose a lot of the trees. The new stuff that's going to come in will take 10, 15 years before it replaces what's being taken out, but it is what it is. So again, Matt, Patrick, thank you for working with us on this and thank you, the council for hearing us through this process. We're not bringing pitchforks and knives anymore. Thank you.
And thank you for all that you guys have done to work with us. You know, it takes both sides cooperation to get to where we are. So appreciate that.
Our next speaker is Andre Kissluk. You can correct me.
Council members, thank you for the opportunity to speak in support of this project. I've been living in Contra Costa for about 30 years. My family and I have been in Lafayette for five years. We've been following this project since its inception. We have two children in Lafayette Elementary who will benefit from this project for the next decade. And as you consider this project and other pedestrian and bike infrastructure improvements in the city, I would urge you to consider the interests of schoolchildren and young adults who are not often represented at these meetings. While Lafayette's pedestrian and cycling infrastructure has been improving, it leaves much to be desired as demonstrated by the tragic and preventable death of Ashley Diaz, whose death kickstarted these improvements. As a cyclist, pedestrian and parent who takes kids to school by bike every day, I can attest to this. My wife has almost been hit by a car and got injured because she had to take evasive action. My son, who was four years old at the time, was almost hit by a car making an unsafe left turn in the vicinity of School Street as well. And I have seen many drivers make unsafe maneuvers on School Street. The overwhelming majority of paved space on our public rights of way is currently dedicated to cars. And many cities around Lafayette have been improving their bike and pedestrian infrastructure and can serve as inspiration and examples for how we can do better. So as you consider this project, I would urge you to view it not in isolation, but as part of a network of future improvements that we can make in support of making cycling and pedestrian experiences better in this city. Thank you for your time.
Great, thank you. Any questions? No, thank you.
And our last speaker in the Don Tatson Community Hall is Scott Ellis.
Scott Ellis, 821 Topper Lane. So I would say it's nice to be the last speaker on this topic. Thank you to the team, Matt. Thanks for all your work on this. I did not bring my pitchfork, but I will tell you that I am being totally transparent, dissatisfied with the outcome. I think there was one omission in my opinion that should have been talked about. Gary brought it up. Should have come from Matt. I don't know the final tally on the number of trees that we will lose on Topper Lane, but I think it's a travesty. I think it's going to become one of the warmest places in Lafayette. I think the number is something like 50 trees and these are old growth trees. So that's one topic that I wanted to bring up. And in particular, there's, and I will say that I appreciate the fact that we're saving the signature tree at 821 Topper. The one that they're shifting the roadway, which is great. The, the other side across the street, however, is for some reason still at six feet. For a reason unknown to me, because there is at least one really nice oak tree that on the other side of the street I'd love to save. And I have not been given any response on why that can't happen. And the fact that I can't get that response from the city and why, when the directive from city council was, because I took this call when we were on vacation in July of last year. The directive was council member Nury requested as close to four feet as possible, if that was possible. And Matt, you and I talked about this at the, at the, the, the meeting that we had a couple of months ago. So I know we got there in many cases, but I'm not quite satisfied that we got there everywhere we could and that we really are making every effort to save some of the trees. And I know that that's not what you want to hear, but I also feel like that's what you need to hear. Apologies for that. And then I will tell you one other thing. The other topic from my perspective is Topper Lane will require another speed bump. So we'll bring that back to you at the appropriate time with likely member, many, many of the people here. But there's one right now by the Riskys' house and then it becomes a drag race. And we're going to accelerate that because we're going to repave the road and we're going to take a lot of, we're going to make it a straight race. So that is something that I would like for everyone to be thinking about and that's what we can do with that leftover money. And I'm out of time. Happy to answer any questions or Matt, happy to follow up. And what I would say is in my final comment, we're available, 821 Topper, stop by any time, always happy to have conversations about any of this.
Appreciate it. Thank you so much. Any questions? No, thank you.
We have no additional speakers at this time.
Okay, great. So I know the designs aren't quite finished and so I'm sure you're aware of Ms. Ellis's concerns. And so, you know, whatever work we can do to preserve trees, if there's a way to do it, is always, was something that we were looking into. So. Anything else?
Quick comment. So I mean, I've attended several of the, the public events that have been going on. I'm, I'm impressed. I know it's a, it's a changes, a challenge at all times. So I thought the, I thought the work that you guys have done, working with the residents to get them to begrudging or not, kind of accepting of a, of I think, of a program that I think will be an improvement when all is said and done, is very exciting. You know, I think things like, you know, drainage that, you know, kind of almost gets just kind of afterthought, especially on Topper, I think it's going to be tremendously improved. And I'm excited to see it, see it happen. So thank you very much for your, your persistence and for the residents, of course, of Topper. And of course, school, which, School Street, which doesn't really get much conversation, it's all been a topic, but the, the improvements on School Street are just staggering and it's going to be really phenomenal. So thank you very much.
Anything else?
Yeah, I, I'd just like to chime in. I wasn't on the council when this matter was, was up last year, but I have to compliment staff, Matt, Patrick, on really extensive work on this. It's, and I look back at the 2024 report materials here, it's also incredibly thorough. I thought this, that we had a conversation on this. It seemed like a PhD planning dissertation. When you look at all the work done for this kind of a project and I, I think what I'd really like to call out in appreciation is the work with the community, the neighbors on the street who had, I think, nearly 20 meetings with homeowners on, on Topper. I think that's really terrific to try to come up with a solution that may not be perfect for people, but takes care of safety issues and is done with nice aesthetics and beautiful plantings. And hopefully an amenity that will last really for several generations and benefit those individuals on bikes and kids who you, who use them. So I think this is a great example of like what city can do, working with residents to try to come up with, not the perfect, but pretty darn good. So thank you.
Anything else? No, thank you. So I guess you were just asking for some, no action is requested. Again, thank you everybody for being involved with this and obviously you'll come back when the bids are out and through and we will find out the final numbers. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right, so we, wow, okay, we're going to go all the way down to council and commission reports. Does anybody have any reports?
Yes, real quick, just kind of following the emergency preparedness discussion earlier. So through Rachel Zener, who's Senator Grayson's aide, I met with, last week with a city councilman from Berkeley, Brent Blackaby, who represents the area, they have districts there along the hills. So if there's like zone zero, they're it.
Right.
And much of their neighborhood will be subject to the new CAL FIRE regs when they come, finally come out. But it was helpful in that, you know, Berkeley has been living this reality since their great 1923 fire and are some years ahead of us in the planning, but I thought it's good to sort of get a sense to what other communities are doing. He was super helpful and I think we all realize we're in, we're all in this together along with our neighbors in Arinda, Maraga and all around us. So again, I think there's a lot, a lot there and I wanted to sort of call that out because there's things we can learn from our neighbors too.
Did the Berkeley ordinance become final?
Yes.
Couple of things I do want to say. I did attend the Hamlin Parkland, the public comment period with Jonathan and the, and the, the staff there. It was great to see that Batwing project coming along and I look forward, hopefully, once the plans are done, we can actually get some funding for it. Another thing I just want to bring up is, as you've heard, I think, you know, we've had three business robberies in Lafayette last week. So I know, I know the police are on it. I just want to, you know, say we're obviously all a little concerned, you know, whether they're random, part of a pattern. And then we've heard other, you know, Wana Creek and others have seen it as well. So it could just be, we're just unlucky, but just kind of reach out. It's important, I think, for businesses to do that, especially one particular Panache Cafe, you know, is a single woman, she, I mean, a single owner basically, who just runs the whole thing. Her name's Apple and she lost quite a bit of money. There's community GoFundMe to set up yesterday and they, they've clawed back about over almost $8,000 for that. So it's all the community coming together. But as I said, the most important thing we can do is patronize our local businesses, especially ones that are owned, not corporations. There's owned by one person, just, just working it every day. So just want to say that. Thanks.
Thank you.
Time to request items on a future agenda. So there have been ongoing discussions that the mayor and I have been having with, with respect to the ballfields. And I'd like to place on the agenda for the next meeting improvements to upper community field, if everyone would.
Okay, so a couple things, and talking about Rachel Zener from Senator Tim Grayson's office. So went to the meeting out in Martinez where we're collecting, he wants to get a budget bill put together. And so, you know, following up on that, he's also working on some legislation around school closures and trying to make it easier if, if the fire department sees a big risky day coming up to enable the schools to close, but to make sure they get their funding. It's like a snow day. It's just like a snow day. And so I'm going to be bringing this up to the Ledge Committee meeting this week. And so if Casey wants to help with us, great. Otherwise, we'll bring, if we can bring it back to council to discuss, if Casey doesn't think that that's part of who he wants to do. Second piece is, went to the mayor's meeting, and Cindy Silva from Walnut Creek spoke, Narip was there, and about Obag, the Plan Bay Area 20, A-Bags Plan Bay Area 2050, and how we sent in a letter to MTC about the transit oriented, with our concerns with the transit oriented policy they're going to put in. And Cindy Silva goes, oh, the comment section for the Plan Bay Area 2050 is through December 18th, and they have built in to Plan Bay Area 2050, MTC's TOD policy. So we need to write letters to both. That was the thought. I know we got an email today with other concerns about Plan Bay Area 2050. And so, and I, Joanne got, right? And so can you send that out to council? I think that was what's going. And then I'd all also bring these up at our Ledge Council just to see if that's part of our Ledge Committee staff, or we bring it back to council the next time. So if we could do that, that would be great. Okay. I think that is it. All right. And then, okay, well, I already did the activities. All right, so Vice Mayor Endury and Councilmember Witherspoon, 21 member to the Creeks Committee.
Okay, as liaisons to the Creek Committee, we're recommending that Christie Rodenbush be appointed to the Creeks Committee. So I move adoption of Resolution 2025-54, adopting Christie Rodenbush to the Creeks Committee, appointing Christie Rodenbush to the Creeks Committee.
Do, I guess, do you have any public comment?
You have no public comment on this item?
Great. A motion and a... Second? All right, all in favor? Thank you. Great. Welcome Christine, Christie, and the written communications from Rob Seidman for the President of Board of Directors of the Town Hall Theater. So he's asking to close down School Street. So from School Street, like right in front of Town Hall Theater, Saturday, April 11th, from noon to 8:00 PM. So that was a new request. I don't think we've seen that request before. And they want to have like a big event and close the street. So I was just wondering if you guys want to discuss that or have a motion or any questions?
I saw, it said he'd talked to...
Do you have a question? No, okay, got it. All right.
It's been cleared by police and fire. At least in the letter, it said that they've talked to police and fire about.
Yeah.
Round, so.
Great. Just making sure that nobody has any other questions about that. So do I have a motion to approve and request and adopt Resolution 2025-55?
A second?
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? What, a public comment? Do you have any public comment?
There, there were no public comments.
Thank you. Appreciate that. All right, so now we're going to go back into closed session. And I want to say, Councilmember Witherspoon will not be joining us because she just joined. And these are reviews, evaluations for the last year for city manager and city attorney. So she's, doesn't feel like she's, you know, nothing. Yes. And we will come back out when we're done.
And Mary just wanted to confirm, there's no public comment on those three closed session items?
Oh, okay. Is there any close, public comment on the closed session?
Mayor Candell, there are no public comments for persons in the Don Tatson Community Hall, and I see no hands raised in my virtual audience. So you have no speakers.
Okay, great. Thank you.
嗯
好
行
嗯
嗯拜
嗯
嗯
嗯
嗯
嗯
嗯
嗯
嗯
嗯
嗯
嗯
嗯
嗯
嗯
嗯
嗯
嗯嗯
All right, City Council is back from closed session and there's no reportable action. And the meeting is now over. Thanks.